It is now. All right, thank you all for coming to the city council meeting this evening. I appreciate everyone being here and if you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for invocation this evening brought by Pastor Flannoy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and kind Father, we thank you so much for the blessings that you bestowed upon us, especially in light of nine eleven. We thank you for those that gave their lives. We thank you for keeping war off of our land. We thank you now to ask you to bless this meeting that be in every fiber, every thread of this meeting, starting with our mayor and our city council members and their assistants. Our police department, we thank you for them and our fire department, our EMSs and all first responders. We thank you for your spirit being in every citizen of Bonner Springs. Now we ask after we've done this meeting that you be in the mechanics of our vehicle and see us home safely. Lord, teach us to love one another as you have loved us. We ask all these blessings in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you Pastor. One of the high honors I have is offering a proclamation and this evening's proclamation is for the POW MIA recognition day. If you'd like to come forward, we'll make a presentation, Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you.
Yes. The proclamation reads, "In every generation, members of our armed forces are defended, have defended our nation and our freedom. And whereas many from Bonner Springs and Wyandotte County shared this sacrifice, whereas it is fitting and just that our entire nation honors and pays special tribute to our prisoners of war and those who remain missing. And whereas the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency states that we presently have more than eighty-one thousand five hundred Americans still missing from World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Gulf War and others. Whereas we honor these Americans who have been prisoners of war, we remember those who are still missing in action and renew our commitment to keep searching until all are accounted for. And whereas the National POW MIA Recognition Day is the third Friday of September each year. Therefore, I Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, do hereby additionally proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as POW MIA Recognition Day in Bonner Springs, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join me in honoring all American prisoners of war and those missing in action to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and the seal of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas. Thank you for your service."
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything at anything, sir?
You know I do.
Yes, sir.
Well, just, you know, he gave you the rough figures of overall from World War II, Korea, Vietnam. Well, I'm gonna break down from Korea just a little more. From Korea, there's still a hundred and four from Kansas that are still missing, unaccounted for. Twelve of those are from Wyandotte County. So, you know, that brings a real close to home. And then from Vietnam, there's currently twenty-four from the state of Kansas unaccounted for. And of those, eight of them are from Wyandotte County. So, you know, that makes it very real and, you know, there's some people. And one of the members of our post personally knew an individual that's missing in action in Vietnam. And he said his folks finally have both passed, so they never did have closure. And that's very important. And so I'm just gonna invite y'all, we're gonna be at Wyandotte County Lake. You know, if there's a veterans memorial, Korea slash Vietnam. It was the first one in the country, in case you didn't know that. The first one in the whole US that was built that was a joint Vietnam-Korean War memorial. And it's on that wall, there are the names from Wyandotte County who were killed in action in either Korea or Vietnam. And we're gonna be there Friday night at six o'clock with the brief ceremony and so forth. We have Mayor Garner from the Unified Government's gonna be there to issue a proclamation. And then we have the State Chairman for the Kansas VFW is gonna be there to say a few words as well. So we invite you, and again, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna start up there. The next item is our Unified Development Ordinance update. Members, sorry, sitting down here at the low podium today. With us this evening is Dawn Warwick from Freeze and Nichols. She is giving us an update on the Unified Development Ordinance and where we stand in that process. Can you hear us, Dawn?
Thanks, Mark. Bear with me for just a minute, I will get a screen share set up for us. All right, well, thank you all so much for giving me a little bit of time this evening. As Mark said, my name's Dawn Warwick. I think I've presented to you all a couple of times now. I'm an urban planner with Freeze and Nichols and I am the project manager leading your Unified Development Ordinance project. So we are closing in on a draft document that'll be ready for public hearings and adoption in the coming months. And I wanted to take the time to provide an overview of the new Unified Development Ordinance. So this evening, I'm just gonna give you an overview of the process, kind of how we've gotten to where we are, and then talk a little bit about the key elements of the new Unified Development Ordinance and then next steps as far as getting this thing across the finish line. And my screen is not moving. There we go, sorry about that. So this was a three-phase project and began with a diagnostic, sort of an audit of your existing regulations and policy documents, moved into actual drafting code content. And now all of the content is drafted, we're sort of jamming it all back together into a single document and working through any adjustments or edits that are necessary as we've kind of pulled it back together and can see it all in a complete form. So basically, we're in this phase three code refinement and adoption phase that will take us on into the end of the year. All right, so just as far as phase three goes, the steps or the tasks related to this phase include a draft distribution, so the draft document has been distributed to city staff. It's also been posted on the project website so that anyone who is interested can take a look at that. Presenting this information to yourselves as well as the planning commission, just so that you all have a good overview of where things are in the process. And then working through the final adoption process, going through a recommendation at the planning commission level and on to the city council for an actual adoption hearing. So the code itself is now restructured. It's a combination of your zoning subdivision and sign regulations. And it's five-chapter Unified Development Ordinance. And the five chapters are those that we've basically presented to you in pieces up to this point. The first chapter, of course, is general provisions, just sort of the enabling legislation, the things that are overviews that are universal to each of the chapters within the Unified Development Ordinance. And that is kind of rearranged, pulling everything together into a general provisions chapter from all of the three separate ordinances previously. Some of the things that are, I think, pretty handy about the general provisions is that we've been able to combine a lot of the information into a matrix or table of sorts or a series of tables. So this one, for instance, that you see on the screen is the approval authority matrix. So which entity has the authority to make a recommendation, which one to approve an action, and which has the appellate authority for different actions, all the different types of applications related to development that can be submitted to the city. Also, we've provided a general development overview process, kind of broken that down into a flow chart. And what's unique about each of these flow charts, there are several within the document now, wherever it is referenced that there is a section or another element of the Unified Development Ordinance is left there for reference, those are cross-references that are hyperlinks. So within the document, if you're looking at it on a digital platform, you can jump to those different pieces of the document if that's what you're interested in. For instance, learning more about a zoning application, you can just jump straight to section two point oh three. Again, with some of the additional tables that have been included in the general provisions, there's a table that identifies which public hearings or approval, well, hearings or meetings are required for different types of applications and also what the notification is, what required notification is for each of those. And finally, I mentioned the hyperlinks in the flow charts. There are also hyperlinks embedded within the text of the document itself. So anytime you see something that's bolded, that's a hyperlink that is available for you to jump within the document to learn more about certain pieces. In chapter two, we've included all of the zoning regulations. There are seven sections and it includes procedures, different submittal types, of course, the zoning districts and permitted uses, conditional standards and non-conformities. So some of the highlights include, again, a general process overview for zoning-related applications. An equivalency table, so your existing seventeen districts have been redefined and adjusted into fourteen districts. Not substantial changes, but just trying to group things in a logical manner to convey the policy direction of your comprehensive plan and also to simplify things a bit. We also changed the nomenclature, so that's really just the names of the zoning districts. So this is, the equivalency table allows you to sort of walk through and understanding what's existing today and what's proposed with the new districts. Also, within the zoning districts, there is a table for each district that includes the dimensional standards. So it helps to identify the difference, size of lots, minimum setbacks, lot areas. All of that is included in a dimensional table for each district. In the table of allowable uses, instead of having each district having a section within sort of that part of the code for that district, we've combined it into a single fairly large table that identifies all of the possible permitted land uses. It has a key, a legend, that helps you sort of navigate your way through the table. All of the zoning districts are listed across the top and the last column is actually the parking requirements relative to each land use. So digging into that table a little bit deeper, you can see that where a use is permitted by right, it's got a P in the column for the appropriate zoning districts. Where it is not permitted, that column or box is blank. If it's a use permitted by a special use permit, you know, with an S. And if it has a number, regardless of how it's permitted by right or through a special use approval, then that number indicates that there are additional criteria or conditional standards for that particular use. And so you need to jump to that number within the ordinance to understand what those additional requirements are. So chapter three is your subdivision regulations. Little more simplistic than the zoning regulations, but overview of the procedures, submittal types and standards. Again, with a process related to plating. One thing that is new within the subdivision regulations is a minor plat procedure that can be administratively approved if all of the criteria are complied with. Also, we included some information and more graphics to help explain concepts relative to connectivity and to measurement of block lengths. The development standards chapter has the most sections, has the most diversity of different types of requirements, but it is the development standards that will affect any type of site development within the city. General provisions are generally going to apply to everything. Some of the key things that have been adjusted or included in this section, chapter, include updating your parkland dedication requirements. So that's been addressed in the update. There is now also a dedication for multifamily units, so it's based on dwelling units. Minimum acreage and the types of improvements and amenities that are required for that parkland are now part of the ordinance. A fee and lieu is still available as an option if the criteria is met and that would be collected at time of building permit. You'll also see in here, there is a section that talks about low-impact development techniques under stormwater and floodplain controls. You've got the ability to allow for an applicant to utilize low-impact designs where, you know, the real intent was not to mandate it, but to remove barriers and hopefully incentivize the use of low-impact development measures. There are two sections for definitions within your new Unified Development Ordinance. One is general definitions that are terms that are found throughout the ordinance and the other is specific to land use definitions. So each of the land uses that are included in the permitted land use table is defined within this definition section in five point oh two. So talking about next steps, what happens from this point forward? We are still sort of in a period of review, revision and refinement. So we're looking for any additional feedback from the city or any stakeholders that have had a chance to review the documents. So that's sort of how we'll spend our time, September and October. The final Unified Development Ordinance will be drafted and available for review in October so that it can be teed up for Planning Commission in November and City Council in December if all things go according to plan. I mentioned that the documents, all of the sections of the new Unified Development Ordinance are available on the project website, so you can get to that using the QR code or the URL. And we want to make sure that people have access to that information, you know, to the extent that they want it to, you know, spend the time and provide comments, give us their feedback so that we are ready to go. I did want to also, see if I can share this. We also created a high-level executive summary-type memo document. And so this is also available, it takes really all of the key updates and elements of the Unified Development Ordinance and it sort of gives you an at-a-glance type look. So an overview again of processes, the structure of the new Unified Development Ordinance and the processes, so all of the different types of applications and sort of the approval authorities are listed here on the first page. On the second page, sort of looked at what's new in the development standards section of the ordinance. So this is where we kind of give reference to the low-impact development section, parkland dedication and other types of buffers and protections that are included for environmentally sensitive areas. The development standards talk about, of course, landscaping and tree preservation requirements. This is also where you find your sign regulations and there are some substantial changes to sign regulations to ensure that we brought them up to current legal requirements. The architectural standards that had already been adopted for the city from your comprehensive plan are incorporated into the development standards. And there's also, of course, an outdoor lighting section. So just wanted to make note of those. There's a page that sort of gives you a high-level overview of what's in the subdivision updates. So again, the plating process includes a minor plat now that can be administratively approved. Lot and block standards have been adjusted. The purpose for those adjustments was to improve and encourage walkability. Also, just some of the graphics that were incorporated, the site triangle is always an important one because that sort of dictates how close people can, you know, install improvements and what types of improvements relative to intersections. And then finally, the last page is sort of that high-level overview of the zoning section and this is a lot of the same explanation from the presentation, but sort of walking you through the permitted use table and how that's applied. It also includes the equivalency table. So if people want to just look at it at a glance and sort of understand the big picture of what the changes look like, then this four-page document, or two pages front and back, is available for that purpose. I will stop sharing now, it's the last thing that I've got for you guys. It's really just the opportunity to ask questions or provide any commentary that would help us with next steps.
Any questions from the city council?
I think you'll have to repeat it.
I'm sorry, I was just asking if there were any questions from the council. Staff? Citizens? It's a lot to take in, it's been a process that's been going on for how long now? Six months of hard work, anyway.
How long we've been working on this, Dawn, has it been about six months, right?
Oh. I think we programmed the whole project to be twenty-two or twenty-four months. So we are probably about eighteen to nineteen months into it.
It's been a process. Well, thank you very much, I don't see any questions, thank you, Mark.
Okay, I think we're good, Dawn.
Excellent, thank you all so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
And you'll be bringing this back to us after it's been to planning and zoning in December.
Yes, sure.
All right, anything else?
Not for me.
Very good, thank you. Moving along, this opens up opportunities for citizens to address the city council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If everyone had an opportunity to grab an agenda, this is your opportunity to address the city council. If you'd like to, please come to the podium, state your name and address, whatever your concerns are. Very good, we'll keep on going. Our next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from August twenty-eighth, city council meeting, minutes of September fifth, city council special meeting, claims for city operations and a public use request for the fall festival. Is there anything to be pulled by staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns from the council? I think none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon, vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, moving on to our first item this evening, a public hearing for the 2023 budget amendments and the 2024 budget. Staff? And go ahead and open a public hearing. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the 2023 budget amendments and the 2024 budget beginning at seven fifty-four.
So moved?
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley, seconded by Mr. Stevens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Public hearing is open. Now, staff.
There we go. Tilly and I will kind of go through this at a high level and then if there's any questions, feel free to pop in or jump in at any point in time. So again, in front of you is the calendar for the 2024 fiscal year. This started back in February of this year and as you can see, it's had many milestones, reviews, sessions, which brings us to today, September eleventh, conducting the public hearing for two items. One is for the 2024 budget and then there's also the 2023 budget amendments, which are items that have come up throughout the year that require additional funding to complete. So I'll kind of let Tilly go through some of the particulars.
Okay, this chart just shows our all budgeted funds. Our main budget is our general fund that has most of the operating budgets for the city. That general fund is a tax levy fund. The enterprise funds are proprietary funds, which work for business-type funds, like the water fund, user charges pay for the expenses, so they're self-supporting. The debt service fund pays for the debt for projects in the city. And then the special revenue funds are funds that have special revenue sources. Some of them are transfers from the general fund so that we can track the support that those programs get from the general fund, so. This chart just shows our total expenditures budgeted for 2024 by fund type. The general fund makes up forty-eight percent of all expenditures. Our debt services are eight percent, those special revenue funds are nineteen percent. And then the water, eleven percent, stormwater, one percent. Solid waste, which is trash, is two percent, and the library fund, two percent, wastewater, nine percent. Twenty twenty-four budget highlights. In our 2024 budget, we have increases for costs for goods and services as well as contracts and agreements. And our personnel line item, we've gone in the 2024 budget to full-time fire department. Currently, we have some full-time and part-time. This would transition us to all full-time and also putting all of our full-time fire department on the KPNF pension retirement system. It also addresses retention and recruitment for all departments in the city and the city library with a nine percent COLA this fall in 2023 and a three percent January of 2024. And this would also adjust the pay scale by those COLA amounts. Capital, infrastructure and improvements. There's money to fund the current and some future CIP, capital equipment and capital improvements, which includes streets and facilities and public utilities as well as asset management and GIS. And the 2024 budget also provides tax relief for our citizens. The tax levy funds, our general fund, which again is our largest fund and our chief operating fund, has an estimated operating revenue of twelve point three five million and proposed operating expenses of the same. So we've got a balanced budget between our, in our general fund revenue and operating expenses. Our city library, they have a separate mill levy, but it's part of the city's mill levy. And so we get the tax dollars for the library and then pay the library for those. So it's kind of just a pass-through from the city to the library. And then the debt- And then the debt services to pay for all of our debt on all of our projects. That includes utility projects. And those are funded with transfers from those water and sewer funds to the debt service fund. All of our tax levy funds show a balanced budget. The department expenditures in the general fund, which again is our biggest operating budget, the majority of it is for public safety. Police at 29% and fire at 28%. And then public works is at 15%. And then the various other departments are shown there. The 2024 budget shows a reduction of two mills this year. So a reduction to our citizens of an estimated two mills based on our current valuation. The enterprise funds, again, the water, sewer, stormwater, and trash funds. And again, these are supported by user fees and not tax dollars. This just shows the budgeted expenditures, expenditures in those funds for 2024. The utility funds do show an increase in water and wastewater of 5% rate increase in January of 2024. And solid waste is a 9% rate increase. And that's based on the increased costs through waste management contract. The special revenue funds, again, these are funds that have special restricted revenues. So they're shown separately. There's also some that are zero-based budgeted, like our risk management, where we budget to spend it all every year in case we need it. And then if we don't, it just rolls over. We also have some recreation funds where, and like the cemetery, where we want to track what we're supporting it from the general fund. So part of its support is from grave openings, but also it's supported by the general fund with a transfer. And this is our list of debt service, or of special revenue funds. The street projects fund, next year, we've got a budget of $1.6 million to put towards streets. Part of that is a grant for, I think it's K-32 and Sea Clip, K-32. So there's several special revenue funds. So a couple of sales tax funds. The CIP sales tax fund helps to provide capital improvements. Most of that is usually spent sending, transferring to the street fund to help provide the expenses in the street. And then the emergency services capital fund, that is budgeted next year mainly for capital for police and fire.
Before you move on, can I ask a quick question? On the Sid Fund at the very bottom there? We're at a point now where the developer has been gotten all of their money to pay back. So is that 105, the total which included the 1% that we gave as well as the recapture? Or is that just the 1% we're recapturing?
The Sid Fund, the 105, is what the city's recapturing of what we've advanced to the developer. And we'll continue to collect. So that's the estimated 1% that will be collected in the district. And that will go back to the general fund.
So the budget in reality is actually getting 2% more because that 1% that we would
Were not having to Yeah, there was some exclusions, like McDonald's we already had. So we didn't pay for some of those businesses that already exist. We didn't pay 1%.
So it wasn't a full
So it wasn't the full match. But yes, there's more of a benefit than just the 1%.
The whole amount right there would be the 1%.
Yes. 2023 budget amendments. We've got seven funds that need to be amended. Emergency Services Capital Fund, this is that quarter cent sales tax. The police department would like to buy tasers this year. And so that's an amendment in this budget. The CIP sales tax, the 138th Street Project is, KDOT, I think, is awarding that bid in December. And we think the costs are going to be higher than what we projected. So we've got an amendment for that. Tourism Fund, there's some additional expenses for signage. And the Water Fund, our meter replacement program, we're amending it to provide funding for that. And then a repayment of interest on our water plant loan. The Recreation Programs Fund, we've got some grants through the state for our summer camp program. And so we were able to do some improvements at the community center with those. So this is just putting those into the budget. And then the Special Parks and Recreation Fund, this is to fund the fitness court that was put in and then Spring Creek Trail design. And then the street projects, the Sea Clip design for K-32 comp and then additional street work.
Where is Spring Creek Trail?
It is the creek area between Metro and Morris. So that was originally, I think it was Phase 5 originally, when it was looked at several years ago. But this is a project that would go back through and evaluate that area to make that connection point between the North Trail and the South Trail, if you will, while also looking at some of the property impacts along that area. I think we've talked a lot about some of the rock that was put into that area. So that's also part of that improvement, our long-term plan there as well.
So key items in the 2024 budget, again, the two-mill levy reduction from the current mill levy, funding for full-time staffing for the fire department, moving our fire department to the KPNF retirement system, transferring to the capital improvement and equipment plans from the general fund, county infrastructure funding, sidewalk improvement project funding, and state grant funding for additional street improvements next year. We've got an addition of a GIS IT position. GIS mapping updates in the utility funds. And then SCADA upgrades and ultraviolet disinfection system in the wastewater fund. And then the wastewater fund did pay off a bond. So their payments decrease for now. Welcome any questions?
Very good. Any other staff that would like to add on to that wonderful presentation? Citizens that are for or against the budget and the budget amendments? This is the opportunity to address the city council. For or against? Seeing none. Go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing at 8:08 PM.
I'll second.
So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Voice vote or vote, please?
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Onto item number two, actually approving the budget amendments and the 2024 budget. 2023 budget amendments. I'd entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the 2023 budget amendments, the 2024 budgeted expenditures of $33,491,210, and the 2023 ad- ad- anyway, however you pronounce it, tax for the 2024 budget in the amount of $4,900,584.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. We'll go ahead and start with questions, concerns, comments down here. Mr. Shannon?
Tilly, it's beautiful. Thank you for all your hard work and everything. No other statement.
Miss Wong, please.
Thank you very much, everybody who worked with all those numbers. And such a clear report. You know so much more now.
Just want to appreciate the staff for producing such a fine budget. We appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate the fact that we haven't forgotten the rock along Spring Creek.
Other questions, concerns, comments? I do want to especially acknowledge Tilly and Sean and the whole staff for the city of Bonner Springs. It's difficult to reduce the mill levy. And we've reduced our mill levy two mills this year. That's significant. And that's a relief to our whole community, but especially those on fixed incomes. While we're also able to provide a lot of the services and improvements and needs that we have in the city. So I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing else? Vote, please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Onto item number three, a community center window replacement bid award.
Hello, city council. My name is Nathan Brungart. I'm a recreation coordinator. If Michael could pick me up. I'm here to ask you to make a motion to award the bid to Time Key Enterprise LLC for the community center window replacement in the amount of $127,956. The bid as it stands will replace the existing windows on the upper story of the community center. They will be energy efficient and they will be white to match all of the improvements we did over here on the government services building. This will not replace the gym windows that we replaced in 2010. Pardon me. This was a project that we tried to start over COVID. It got delayed with everything that went on. The original budget was about $120,000, which is the budget that I operated with when we were bidding this out. Before we put the bid out, I did walk through the building with a J.E. Dunn project engineer and buyer's glass just to see if our money would get us as far as we wanted it to go. After walking through with them, they did let us know that $120,000 would be pushing just getting those upper-level windows replaced. So I changed the scope of the project to include that. When you guys look at the form in front of you, there are some red Xs on that form. Those are add-ons, pardon me, that our bidder chose not to bid because we didn't think that we'd have funds available for it. The project was posted in the Wyandotte Echo, the city website, and Construction Connect on July 25th, 2023. The bid closed on August 29th at 3:00 PM. I did a total of three walkthroughs with different companies for this project, one of which being local. I did follow up with the two companies that chose not to bid just to see why they didn't bid. One company chose another project. And the other one did not follow through because they had an issue with some window treatments. If approved, we would begin a pre-construction meeting next week. Part of that would be them taking part of the front window out to get it tested for lead and asbestos. So there would be some plywood up there for about 30 days. This project should finish before basketball. It does not interfere with any of our upstairs rentals, but it may result in an alternate entrance being needed for one week of volleyball. Are there any questions I can answer about this project?
Very much. We will see. Any other staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid to Time Key Enterprises LLC for community center window replacement in the amount of $127,956.
Second. So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mrs. Woods. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
The, are the framing, is it pretty much staying the same? It's just the windows themselves? Or is all that framing, well, being replaced?
I believe the framing on the majority of the windows will be different. It should be more similar to what we have over here where it's those longer rectangles. I will have schematics, like what their plans are, at that meeting next week. And I can pass those off to Sean and just send out to you guys.
That, I mean, the whole, the whole appearance needs to be dressed up. And that's why I was curious if all that framing would be replaced as well.
Yes, that's why they're doing the lead and asbestos testing, because they believe both of those are going to be present. So if those are present, we are going to remediate it just based on the nature of our building.
Thank you.
If we do have to do lead or asbestos remediation, do you have any idea what that will do to the cost of the bid?
So $120,000 was what I did everything with. After the bid closed, I got access to the budget. And I found out there were about $160,000 budgeted for this fund. So I'm anticipating lead and asbestos abatement to be $6,000-ish at the max. And then any leftover funds we have with this project, I plan to try to get a change order to replace some of the lower-level windows here in the community center.
Thank you.
It's a good report.
Thank you.
Pictures too, as a background.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Please.
Yes, I didn't hear the part where he said when he got a change order, if there was anything left over, he was going to spend it on what?
The lower-level windows for the community center. So this one will replace the upper-level ones. Those are the original windows.
Okay.
The lower-level ones were the ones replaced when the community center and library went in.
Thank you.
Which will need it soon also. Windows have lead in them?
The window frame should have lead paint on it. And then if you walk to the original windows, the soldering, they think might have lead in that as well.
Ah, okay, sorry. No other questions, concerns? Seeing none, vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll have something to be even prouder of. Thank you very much. Very nice presentation. Next item up is a water meter replacement project update. Sounds like you've had quite a time.
Bend this back down for me. As tall as he was. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. This is just going to be a briefing essentially of the history of where we started, kind of where we are now and where we hope to go with this project. Of course, it's not worked out exactly the way we anticipated. But most of you were here back in 2021. And that's when we first entertained this discussion. We have over 3,100 meters. And at that time, they were all mechanical meters. And we, I believe, had an estimate at that time that at least half of those meters were past their useful life. Most mechanical meters, you can talk generally about 10 or 15 years. Unfortunately, with the quality of water that you have here, it's a little bit more abrasive than most other places. And so we really think there's like, you start having degradation on these mechanical meters, even at seven years, seven and eight years. Anyway, the idea was that we needed to upgrade these meters. And so there was a lot of discussion about whether to just keep going with what we're doing with the mechanical meters versus the modern meters, which have no moving parts. And those are the ultrasonic meters. After we did additional analysis, it was determined that those ultrasonic meters are quite accurate. And they're also less expensive than the mechanical meters with a longer life expectancy. So we gave a presentation to the council back in 2021. You gave your blessing to go ahead and at least do a pilot project and move forward with the project if we if we're necessary, if it worked out. We had a very successful pilot project for about six months to test these in 2021, and council gave approval in the fall of 2021 to move forward. That brought us to 2022 where we issued a PO, and we had essentially 860, over 860 of these that we went ahead and got installed with a remote reading. Then we, of course, ended up with a surprise last Christmas. And the communication link failed, which we soon found out that the company, whether it's COVID or who knows what, the company went bankrupt. And so we have been scrambling ever since, since January of 2023, to try to determine what our next steps were and what's most prudent for the city. So as far as what we're doing today, ever since January, we have been having to read 800, over 860 of these meters in person every month. And so when you're doing hand reads or human reads, yep, there's going to be some errors occasionally. We've worked really hard to keep the same meter schedule, and I know there's been some angst over this. Certainly aware of that. Don't want to discount that at all. But our error rate overall for what we've had to do for the last several months, doing this in person has been pretty good. Now, up to date, we had 30 of these that we started with a new vendor. After discussing it with the council, moving forward, and last week, we installed an additional 50. So as I speak to you today, there's now 80 that are open functional with these endpoints. Just heard this afternoon from the vendor, they say I should have another 400 of these units in September and another 420 by October 15. The goals have changed since the notes I've provided to council. The goal really at this point is to get those 860 in place and operational by November 1. And then we will proceed to do in November and December the other 900 and some meters and connections that we have in storage right now that we can install as soon as we have the endpoints. And then we'd complete everything in 2024. So that's kind of where we came from. The fun we had over the last several months and where we hope to be in the next 60 days at least. And hopefully I didn't miss too many parts in there, but I'll go ahead and see if you have any questions at this point.
Very good. Any other staff to add? No? Seeing none. Questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
There's no motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seeing none, I'd go ahead and ask for questions or concerns from the council. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Abarth, I understand then that we're all, when we're done, all of the meters will be able to be read remotely.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Several questions. One, staff-wise. I know many of us have heard from community members who have had issues where they've had extremely low readings for several months, and then suddenly they get a extremely high water bill. There is a policy in place, correct, that we can help those, those utility users out as far as leveling out some payment plans or something for them to get current? Is that correct?
I was going to say, I won't speak to that, but
Don't go too far.
I know someone who can.
Yes, I just talked one today. So the water does go through the meter even though it wasn't billed when it should have. So we tell them we can work, we'll work out a payment plan that we can't, because the water went through, the bill, the billings were corrected, just wasn't billed timely. And so, but we do, we, whatever, we'll work with their budget.
If we have a constituent that reaches out to us, is our first contact, front, you know, administrative, you know, Sean, Frank, or should we just send him directly to you?
You can send him to me.
Directly to you, okay. Then, secondly, the 960 or 900 plus that you're talking about, are those ones that did not get replaced originally with the other?
That's correct. Those are units that are not on the ground yet. They're in storage. So there was no point in installing those and having more to hand read every month.
Right, that's why, that's why I'm saying we're not as worried about those ones right now because we're getting accurate reads.
Exactly.
And then innovative utility solutions. Have we got a fail-safe plan in place for in case something were to happen with this company? Or is there software that reading devices much more universal?
I'd say yes and no to that. We vetted them obviously quite a bit more, which is why a lot of this has taken a little bit longer than we would have liked it. But they are actually working in conjunction with another much larger company. And so they're, gosh, in a multi-state area, very large organization. So, I mean, in the end, we feel way more comfortable with them. And in fact, their track record is speaking for itself, so.
I know their software may be proprietary. It's across several organizations that if one were to fail, there'd be others.
Yeah, they have, they have the ability to read multiple, multiple lines and things like that. Multiple carriers, I think is the correct term, their units.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in the same situation.
Well, we do not want to go through this again either. And so we've done the best we can in vetting and reviewing.
So this new system is the one that has the, looks like a little LED or a solar
Solar panel.
panel on the very top of the meter cover? And those last for about how long or?
Twenty years.
How long do they, you think they'll last with lawnmowers running over them and those kind of things?
Well, actually, if they're installed properly, I'm sure there's going to get a few hits. But if they're installed properly, they, they rise just very little, like a quarter inch off the top of that lid.
I saw one, and that was the first thing that made me concerned. I don't, didn't know that, all the history, but that little solar light
Sure.
panel on the water meter stands out like a sore thumb, and I certainly-
It'll operate without the sun. It's battery operated, but
That just charges-
solar helps it along, yeah.
Very good. And the, this system can be read from the wa- water plant, or do you, yeah?
It can be-
I didn't know if you had to drive around.
Read from the room right up there.
Okay, very good.
Finance department.
Seeing no other questions or concerns, thank you very much. This was informational and no action needed at this time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, comprehensive compensation study request for proposals. Staff?
Before you tonight is just a simple request. This is an unbudgeted item for 2023. Was in 2024, but has moved up to this year with your approval to authorize the process of going out for a request for proposals, or RFP, for a com- or comprehensive compensation study. This would review and analyze the compensation structure for city staff. Also provide recommendations for implementation, and then also would include a review of benefits. This was last completed in 2019. So this would be an update to that, that process. So again, what we're looking for today is just authorization to put that together, go out for effectively bid or proposals, and come back to the council. So this would be a little bit quicker process than what was originally planned.
Very good. Any other staff input? Citizens that would like to have questions or concerns about this item? Questions, concerns, comments? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name's Rick Rogers. I own Cool Heat KC with my wife. Address is 15890 Linwood Road, but the building's down at 501 East Front Street. So the question I have is, a- as far as the comprehensive study, how often will that be done? Are we going to be going through this every three or four years?
Typically, this type of study, I think in our last one, it actually referenced a five to seven year timeframe to complete this type of a review. Again, this is kind of a high-level review where they actually will come in, do a PAQ or a position assessment questionnaire where they go through each position, look at the duties, and then go through and ultimately survey other municipalities. And in our instance, we also look at some private utilities as well because of our uniqueness with having utilities. And then put together a pay plan based off of that information.
My only concern is the rapid change of pay. And so if it's stretched out for four or five years, the city's going to be so far behind, it's, you know, you're playing catch-up again, basically. I'd hate to see that happen.
Yeah, I think what you're asking is how often it could be updated by, yeah. So this was more of a external review, if you will, and certainly based off of budgeting authority by the city council. This could be updated every year if they choose.
Okay. Thank you.
Been accelerated.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to stand and speak for or against? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to solicit proposals for a comprehensive compensation study.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. We'll start right here with questions, concerns, comments?
No, I don't have any.
All right. Ma'am?
It's time that we finally do another one.
Yep.
That's what it is. I'm okay.
Ma'am? None, sir? No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mike Mahan? Oops, sorry, I heard that. Kip?
Yes.
Sorry, Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto the reports this evening, the first of which is the city manager's report.
Just one quick announcement reminder. Homecoming is, is coming up at the end of the month, so Friday, 9:29. There will be a parade that will be coming downtown starting at 5 o'clock, so look forward to all of that. And I also wanted to bring up an item that came up late last week for the council's consideration or at least acknowledgement. We had previously talked within the street program about completing some work at the same time that the Unified Government was intending to do work out in Loring. We did get some information back from them recently about their work and their bid out there. They're actually intending to start that this week. We estimate that our cost out there would be roughly $200,000, which would include the north portion of Stillwell. The boundary between the county and the city is Stillwell. So the southern portion of Stillwell is the county, the northern portion is Bonner, and then our portion of 142nd, which is kind of a similar situation. Unified Government has agreed to complete that work on, basically managing the project, and they would intend to bill us back for that. So I just wanted to make sure, again, we, we kind of talked about this during, during our award for the, for our bid work throughout the city that has actually just started last week. But just I, I wanted to make sure everybody was okay moving forward with completing that work. With them doing that, this would more than likely require a budget amendment into the street fund as we transfer the funds from the general fund into the street fund. But we're planning to do that on a few other things anyway in December, so. If there was anybody that was concerned about it, maybe as another way of asking that question, I just want to make sure we're, we're moving forward on the same page.
Are we getting as good a deal or better than if we took it out to bid ourselves?
I think so. Frank could probably speak to that. I think we initially estimated that to be about twice as much than what, what we're actually paying at the 200, so.
Still better.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else, sir?
No, that was it.
Very good. We'll go ahead and start with our city council items this evening, and we'll start right here, ma'am.
I have nothing.
Sir?
Nothing.
Nothing from me?
Over here.
I've got two questions. One, the first one is on the street renewal that's going on on Lakewood. I just had a question on that. I noticed they haven't milled the center. Are they going to do that, or is it just an edge replacement? Or do you know that at this point?
I would think it's probably just the milling machine that they had there and just the width of it, and they'll come back with probably a skid steer and, and mill the, the center part up.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know on that one. The other one is, was at the exercise park here recently, and there was people up there using that. And when I was there, there were some other people that were hitting me up at that time about, oh, this is fine, but weren't we going to get a splash park also? So I'm bringing that up as a possible
Sure.
item for the future.
And I think Justine is actually working on putting together some, some initial master plan ideas. So we are looking to engage with Land Works Studio, who actually put together our, our recreation master plan three years ago now, two years ago, not that long. Yeah. So they, they've been, we're engaging them to actually take a look at that whole site with that in mind to say, is there potential to do a splash pad or something else?
Pickleball. I'm getting pickleball requests for that area.
Pickleball's another, yeah. There'll be a whole, I think, level of engagement to try to make sure that we're getting feedback from the residents about what they would like in, in this new park.
Thank you, Justine. Keep it up. That's all I have, mayor.
Very good. Thank, thankfully you, you brought a little bit. Otherwise, I'd never heard the city council be so quiet. But I appreciate it greatly. No, I'm joking. Yeah, there's lots of wants and, and desires for that area. I know the Parks Department's dreaming about a lot of things too and integrating a lot of those concerns. So though, like you said, there'll be a chance to input for the community on how best to utilize that area. But we're looking forward to it, and it seems to be being received very well by the community, the exercise opportunities and just the quality of life that it improves for a lot of community members.
I have one thing. Just came from line. Apologies.
Please.
Could we maybe ask Sherwin-Williams to put a banner or a sign or something out in front of their building? It's a constant topic of conversation.
Coming soon.
Yeah.
That, that's something we should consider. There is, there is a lot of things going on in Bonner. A lot of things that have been in the works for a long time. And so it's great to see some things coming to the end use. I understand there's property that in between Sherman Williams and traffic light. Is that, are those, the holdup that the state had, is that, are they working their way through that?
I believe this issues with the state, initially there was some right-of-way transactions that needed to occur between the new landowner and the state. So that has all been taken care of. I do want to thank Mr. Thompson for his assistance with the state in getting that done. We do have some, some preliminary plans coming through for, yes, the, the area to the north of Sherwin-Williams to the stoplight, and so that's coming forward.
Nothing yet. Well, that, that's exciting, like a lot of the future plans that are going on in Bonner Springs. But it's nice that things are continuing to move forward, so. As far as the mayor's report this evening, I don't have anything significant to add. We had an opportunity to meet with other mayors, and am planning on attending. We have a quarterly meeting with the mayors of Wyandotte County coming up this next month. And so we continue to keep the lines of communication open between us and the county commission. Was, attended one of their meetings last, just at the end of last month as well as this month. So if you have any questions or concerns for me? Seeing none? Anyone else? We're adjourned.